Starting right on time.
That's right.
That's right. All right, my timekeeper to my left here calling to order the five o'clock pre-agenda meeting for December the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Let's see, do we have any adjustments to our agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any presentation or special recognitions or awards?
I would like to make a recommendation for us to consider, we can, after the public speaking comment section, I'd like to ask the board to consider permanently putting a placeholder there that says Board Comments and Updates. It gives the opportunity for us to update each other on any task forces and things, and then we could leave unfinished business and new business for actionable items.
Okay, so you're looking for a consistent permit change to the agenda?
Yeah, we could add, we could ask staff to add, after public speak, public comment period, the next item would be Board Comments and Updates for every meeting. If we don't have any, we don't have any. But also it gives us the opportunity, if we need to reply to any public comments made during the public speaking comment section or something, it gives us the opportunity to reply to that.
And to update on?
Update Board's commissions, meetings.
So instead of adding it to this agenda with any adjustments for this one?
We could start.
Start at the, how about two thousand twenty-three?
December twenty, or?
I would just start it in the December, the next December meeting.
Add that to?
Just ask staff to add it to the agenda after a public comment period.
Public comment.
Just Board Comments and Updates.
Manager Mould, is that something we need to discuss further at the sixteenth, or are we comfortable with making that decision now, or how does that look on, consistent with a?
It's certainly up to the board how you wish to do that. It would take, of course, the board being unanimous, well, not unanimous, but the majority of the board being willing to permanently adjust the agenda, and then Ms. Anderson will have to go in and make those adjustments so it'll appear every agenda. So it's up to the board if you'd prefer to do it and start with a clean slate, or talk about it further on the sixteenth, and if you have any other adjustments to it, if you have any other adjustments to the agenda, or would like to see a different format or something, we will need a little time because we'll have to go back and program that in. So, but it's up to the board. If you'd rather go ahead and make that change now to start effective the twentieth, or discuss it further at the retreat, because we do have a retreat on the sixteenth, and to see if there's any other changes you want to make, it's up to the board what you prefer to do.
I think it's a good thing that we had it in. I don't know that it's that early. I was thinking, you know, Gene and I, I don't know the good or the bad to it, but kind of at the end of it, after we've, after the administrative matters, that we've cleared all that out, kind of at the, where we're talking about the new business, old business area, but.
That's what I'm talking about, is you have the public comment period, which?
Right.
It's right after that.
Okay.
It would be right before new business.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I apologize.
And I agree with what you're saying, and it's not a bad thing to do, but I say, because it's so close, let's, and there may be one or two more, let's do it on the sixteenth, where we're all together.
Discuss any more?
That's fine.
The way we can add it all then, and we can probably still get it in on the twenty-third if we need to.
Twenty.
But that way we have ifers anymore, so we're not changing and changing and changing and changing.
Okay, and just make the change one time?
We'll just add that to the agenda on the sixteenth.
So keep in mind between now and the sixteenth, as you look through our standard agenda, see if there's anything else. Do you have questions on?
Yep.
More than, all right. Thank you for that, Commissioner Haupt. Do we have any appointments before the board this evening?
No.
Okay. We do have a public hearing this evening that'll take place at the seven o'clock, but I would like to ask Matthew Todd to go over a little bit of information, if you would, so please give us a debrief of information so we'll be prepared for this evening.
Sure, this is a request we have for a rezoning of just under twelve acres off McCrory. This is a conditional request, so since I know we've got a couple of new members on the board, the conditional request is set up to where you have straight rezonings or conventional zonings and then conditional rezoning. So we see a lot of straight rezonings, we do see some conditional. So the conditional, the process there is that there's an initial public input meeting that the applicant holds to gather input from those neighbors and to try to address any concerns. You see the conditional, you know, we try to recommend the conditional if we think there's the need for it, if we know, feel like there's going to be more neighbor opposition, or if the request is a little more questionable. This one came about, I think, just the applicant, based off requesting GB, based off its being on the edge of the future land use plan, the direction it went conditional. So they did hold a meeting for this one, I think five residents showed up, listened to the presentation. It's really put on by the applicant, staff does attend if there's any questions from staff. Planning Board did end up voting unanimously to support this request, nine zero. There was one neighbor that came to Planning Board in opposition, and the proposed use, this one's again conditional, so it's very limited, the applicant limited it on himself to the GB zoning with warehousing, storage, no outdoor storage. And it's really, I think we've dealt with these a little bit, but it's more than just a mini warehouse, it's almost like we've referred to them as man caves, and I guess they could be she sheds too, or something, but for people that own classic cars, they're renting these larger facilities, they're parking their cars in their multiple cars or RVs, whatever the, there's different size units that they've proposed. So that's the use, and it is very limited to only that use, is what's been proposed.
But they can work out of it though.
Work out of it?
Can they work out of their building?
Yeah, perform maintenance or something on the vehicles that they're doing?
Their own vehicles, I believe the applicant can address that a little better, because I think they're limiting it themselves to how much work somebody could really do on the vehicles. But mostly it's for storage, and it is somewhat limited on how much work somebody could do. It's not to, it's not to have a repair shop, you can't rent one of the units to have a repair shop.
The one that you spoke against, was there a specific?
Just general development of the property, the change itself, traffic, one fifty.
Any other questions? All right, we'll see you at seven o'clock, thank you. All right, going to the administrative matters. Manager Mould, would you like to start those off, please?
Absolutely, thank you. The first item was a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-three to purchase weapon vaults, and Sheriff Darren Campbell is here to make this presentation to the board.
Good evening, congratulations, Commissioner Woman, Neder, Vice Chair Burt, and then everybody else. The first one is Budget Amendment Twenty-three. The previous board and this board, we have always been very proactive versus reactive with our school's safety. Today's climate, constantly we're looking on the news, we're seeing the threats from active shooters, from other threats. So in this, the Idaho County Sheriff's Office is requesting to purchase a hundred and ten thousand dollars, or requesting to purchase a hundred and ten thousand dollars in weapons vaults, using special account funds, which is other funds received to enhance law enforcement or controlled substance tax. These vaults will be placed in Idaho State's schools serviced by the Idaho County Sheriff's Office. A little bit of it, it's, there will be a fifteen-digit keypad, these are not your gun storage vaults, these are a patent rotating vault, bolted from the bottom, so they're not a simple vault system, but it will be used to store certain things that we need inside the school versus an officer would have to vacate the school to retrieve an item such as we've seen on news. And being very cryptic about it, I think you understand exactly what I'm saying. So, and we will have all maximum safeguards in place, which means behind other locked doors and things of that nature.
That figure was again, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
What was that figure?
One ten.
A hundred and ten.
A hundred and ten.
Yeah, other law enforcement restricted, yes, substance tax, and other law enforcement funds received to enhance law enforcement.
Any other questions? Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. Sheriff Campbell also has the next two items, so the next item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-four to purchase ballistic rifle plate vests and ballistic helmets using commissary profit funds. Sheriff Campbell?
Sheriff's Office requesting the use of three hundred thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars of commissary profit funds to purchase ballistic rifle vests and ballistic helmets. The initial purchase using commissary profit funds, the lifespan will be ten years for the vest, five years for the helmet, which is an unbelievable amount of time for a vest. Obviously use commissary fund, no taxpayer dollars, and these vests will be equipped with the latest technology, they'll be easily and immediately be able to be donned on officers for barricaded subject, hostage rescues, active shooters, anything, so that is a person. Actually, if you'd like to see one along with the helmet, we have a model in the back, if you'd like him to stand up, so we do.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, Joseph.
We wouldn't want to miss that.
I wouldn't either.
You got rock back there.
And this is something also, the State Patrol uses these, there's a lot of larger agency, and this is basically a system that's above and beyond your basic vest, I mean, the highest threat level of protection you can see, and it does protect the midsection of the body, it's not overall protection, but it does protect the most vital area.
Better than your day-to-day.
Oh, absolutely, and I think that system, I don't know, I didn't read it, probably fourteen pounds to eighteen pounds, but the highest level of protection we could have.
Can we get one of the officers to shoot him and let's see what happens?
I'm still waiting to see if he tries it on.
That's his version of modeling, I see. It's close enough, thank you for the visuals.
I think is always, what I liked about that is, is being proactive to get the latest and best equipment to keep your people safe, proactive, because you know, they, you know, they're in the danger, and with the society today, you know, people like criticizing the weapons, but it's the user. You're not gonna, you're not gonna solve those type crimes by getting rid of, taking weapons from the good people.
Yeah, and I think we've seen grocery stores to schools everywhere, we want to make sure the officers, the initial responding officers are able to withstand that initial wave of violence or gunfire, whatever. This will allow them to last longer to make sure they eliminate the threat to protect everybody else, so, and also protect them so they can go home, so it's the highest level of protection we could give them.
Along with the vehicles that you've invested in and all those things, it's just, it's necessary in today's society.
Let be enough to each officer?
Yes, yes. Every sworn officer that we have armed and sworn deputy be responding to those calls, including schools, civil, investigators, everybody.
Consent?
Consent.
Thank you. And then the sheriff's final item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-five to accept North Carolina State House Bill One-O-Three grant for one million dollars to purchase a mobile command unit. Sheriff Campbell?
Budget Amendment Twenty-five, we'd like y'all to accept and allocate a million dollars to purchase a mobile command vehicle. The funding was approved by North Carolina House Bill One-O-Three in the two thousand twenty-three budget. And I gotta give hats off, we met with Senator Sawyer on this one day, what could we use, and was trying to think of something to come back to Idaho that would benefit fire, highway patrol, ECOM, we've already started working with ECOM and our fire units, even more as a fire to make sure they have a location inside of a vehicle, that if we had to shut down everything, we could operate out of it. And I think it's great that we was able to get a million dollar, a hundred percent of the benefit to Idaho County through a North Carolina appropriation.
Another proactive measure, we appreciate their support, they've been really good.
They've been great, along with Jeff and Gray.
Federal Bureau, Patrick Henry and those guys, Ted Bud, all those people have been really good to get grants back to our emergency services, and I think this is another example of needs.
Our legislators, you know, I can't knock Gray Mills and Jeff McNeely, and, you know, Vicki's the initial one I responded to, but they never batted an eye, they knew it'd come back and benefit us, you know, from the state, so it's a million dollar asset that we need, you know. One of the biggest ones that I've seen was when the Highway Patrol had the wreck, you know, it's not our agency, with the golf cart, you have titles, they had nowhere to even interview the families.
Right.
So we'll have that and set up for fire, you know, such as when contained, we can put it on emergency, or leave it on the scene for long periods of time, not just law enforcement, fire, rescue, wherever else, airport, wherever else we need it, it's a million dollars, it didn't come out of our pockets.
County asset.
It's a county asset.
Consent?
Consent.
If you're leaving, when you leave, look on the front seat of my car, my wife sent your wife a bag of rubber bands.
That's called breaking and entering, and I'm not gonna do it.
The white mask.
No. I think Beth, I think the other guy's gonna present the?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheriff Campbell.
Thanks.
The next item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for approval to donate surplus equipment to Union and New Hanover Counties, and Mr. David Sifford is here to make this presentation to the board.
This is another request from the Sheriff's Office, I didn't know the sheriff was gonna be in front of him, and we could've let him do it. So they're requesting to donate two pieces of surplus equipment, declare the equipment surplus and donate to two other counties in the state, and that's two, if I get this right, chromatography machines, we just don't use them anymore, these things were put in service in fiscal two thousand and fourteen, and they were paid for by the Governor's Crime Commission Grant. The state's indicated they don't have any use for the equipment, they don't want it back, and indicated it's good for us to donate the equipment to another, to other counties. One's gonna go to Union County, one to New Hanover County.
And if I understand correctly, this is technology we're no longer using, but these two counties are, so it's no use to us because we've upgraded our technology, but these two counties could still use this equipment and it still has some life to it.
That's excellent, great support within the state.
And I know, I know you and I talked about it, Sheriff, and those agencies appreciate it, because just, instead of leaving it sitting somewhere you're not using it, you're putting it back in use for somebody, they appreciate, they appreciate that.
All right, consent?
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Idaho State's Schools for approval of Budget Amendment Number Twenty-six, and to utilize lottery funds for athletic stadium upgrades at North Idaho High School, and Mr. Tim Ivey is here to make this presentation to the board.
Congratulations to our new board members and Commissioner Neder, and thank you very much. So Dr. James couldn't be here tonight, but from our memo you can see that on November fourteenth, the Idaho State's Board of Education approved the completion of some needed safety upgrades and to our athletic stadium at North Idaho High School. The estimated project is gonna cost us three point seven million dollars, which includes the replacement of the track, adding synthetic turf, and updating the stadium lighting. That will include new lighting poles to meet code, approximately one point seven million dollars will be used out of our current capital funding that's already been appropriated to us, and we're requesting to be able to pull down two million dollars from our, I mean, two million from our lottery fund. So I provided you guys with the application, and also will be glad to answer any questions that you may have about this project.
What's the, is this just for one school?
Yes, sir.
And what is the breakdown of the lighting, the track, and the turf?
So the lighting for the school is about five hundred thousand dollars, that's including new poles, electrical panels, and upfit to do that, and then the field is somewhere around one point, I think it's four or five, and send the track is the rest of the funding. So the current condition of that track is it is having to be shut down, because we have an area where, and most of our tracks have been put off for such a long time, Norris just happens to be the one in the worst condition, but the asphalt, which is the substructure, is giving way, and so the rubber, chip rubber that is glued on top of it is coming off, and it's creating quite a hazard, so they're actually not gonna host tracks this year, or track events this year.
I didn't quite catch it, what was the number, just for that, just for track?
I don't have the exact breakdown, I know that the turf itself is just over a million dollars, it's like one point two, so whatever the remainder of that is, is that exact breakdown, and we haven't, we just finished up with our RFQs for design build, we did select the company to work through it, and that was a company that had already given us a quote, so I don't have that exact quote with me right now, but I could get you the specific breakdowns if you would like it, but.
You're at three point seven, and you're five hundred, and then a million for the other, that's about two million for the track.
Eight, yeah, because if the, if the lights were five hundred, and the turf is about one point four, so about one point eight for the track.
Can you give us some details on that track, is that like the eight lane when you had mentioned it one time?
I can, and I actually have the presentation that I provided to our committee of the whole, I'll be glad to show you that, it goes over all the information on it, it has every pictures, includes the financial breakdown, the cost savings over time, it just depends on how much time you want me to stand up here.
I know we want to go ahead and address, let's toughen on a couple more questions we have before we, how long is the presentation?
It doesn't take but about, I don't know, maybe five, ten minutes to go through, it's got pictures, it's about sixteen slides, but there, there're not a lot of information on.
All right, go ahead then.
Sure.
Make some notes on questions, please, as we go through this. And just to note, you, we could say, I know you didn't expect to do a presentation this evening, you brought that for our benefit, so thank you for navigating the technology.
If I can find it on here.
Tim, if you'll, if you'll go to the yellow folder on the very bottom left-hand side?
Yes?
No, close that out.
Okay.
Go, that one, go to that, and then you should see on the left-hand side your USB drive, and then find your PowerPoint from there.
There it is, thank you.
You're welcome.
One other question, excuse me, is, is there a difference if we did this in increments, like did the field and lighting and did the turf separate, I mean?
There is.
And then up there at the top where it says slideshow about the, that one, click on that, and then go from the beginning, far left, right there.
Thank you, I'm a Google person, so.
You're welcome.
I'm not so familiar as much as I need to be with this. Yes, there actually is, so I can answer that question. If you put the track in, and then you come back later on and you decide to add the field, you're actually gonna have to come back in and mess with your track, so they recommend you do them all at once. So we did quite a bit of study, we actually was tasked with looking at this when I first got here, because, when I first started in my position over a year ago, because we had some issues with those, wanted to make sure that our track facilities were up to par. Now, this is part of the deferred maintenance that Idaho State's Schools has mentioned before, because, you know, the school is not just a building, the school includes the playgrounds and all the auxiliary facilities and things too, so our tracks have had quite a bit of time that they haven't actually been serviced. So one of the things is, this is the need for upgrading, real quickly, the track services are no longer able to be resurfaced, I mean, the substructure of them has been pastime, they have to be pulled up, many of them are not actually up to code, meaning that they're not up to par, and we've got some drainage issues with them. So the one at Norris specifically poses a safety issue for students and athletes, so they're no longer gonna have track meets, they've actually closed their track. We're spending about a hundred thousand dollars a year per field in upkeep, and that's just for grass, that includes, you know, taking care of it, the machinery that goes into it, irrigation, all of the things that go into doing that. For five high schools, that's over five hundred thousand dollars a year that schools are putting out to take care of grass. Stadium lights, when we tried to upgrade those to LEDs, what we found out was we had three schools that the lighting poles did not meet the new code to be able to be upgraded, so they have to have brand-new poles put in them. Fortunately, Statesville High School and Lake Norman High School had upgraded poles, so their difference is, South Idaho, I mean, Statesville High School's quote for lights was a hundred and forty thousand dollars to upgrade, okay, to add new ones is five hundred thousand, so it kind of gives you an idea of difference, it's because they have to go in and change out the infrastructure. This is some photos of tracks at North Idaho, you can see in the picture where we had a previously repaired area, and it's starting to actually come apart, and then this is another picture of what it looks like, so you can see that that area is no longer able to be renovated, actually, or repaired. So here's an area where you've got open gaps in it, it's come apart, places where they've tried to repair it, and the repairs are no longer sticking to the substructure. So there's just some more, now we go to West Idaho, just to give you kind of an example of what it looks like compared to another school. West is a couple of years, maybe one or two years behind them before it starts to appear into that same type, and so as you can see the black spots in here, this is where the rubber subsurface is coming through. So then, this is, I mean, when you look at it on your camera, it looks better, but from up here, you can actually see some of the asphalt in this far corner that you can start to see through. West track is actually, was never sloped correctly, so what happens is they've got some big drains in there to kind of control that, and part of this would be laser grading so that we actually come out with leveled tracks, if they were to do a holistic situation where every year we updated one, which was what my recommendation to the board was, was let's update one facility a year, and what they voted on was, let's just do North Idaho now, we'll revisit later on. So they did pass a resolution just to address Norris, and that was primarily due to the safety concerns. So here's some other pictures, so like it says, similar, there where you've got West, Statesville, and South Idaho, which have some, a little bit longer life cycles. The estimated cost is anywhere between two point five and three point seven million, three point seven million is Norris, it's the most expensive, reason is it's the farthest gone per se, it's in Norris repair. We recommended that we looked at certain types of turf that we place on there and certain types of tracks, reason being is because of their warranty and their life cycles. It gives us the ability as a school district to have a predictable resurfacing plan and to know when these items are going to need repair. And so we tried to find something, we went through GeoSurfaces, which is a local company here in Mooresville, to get this information, and had quite a bit of studies done on this to tell exactly what was going on. So when you put in the eight-lane track at Norris, which is the only school we have that has the ability to add the two additional lanes, the cost is just under three point seven million dollars. Our other schools are not able to have an eight-lane track due to the area that's built around it, if you've been to them, many of them have large retaining walls, we would have to do major renovations, like taking out stands and things to get eight-lane tracks. But the ability to have an eight-lane track provides us an opportunity to be able to make our facilities create profits for us, and not just profits that, or profits that come back to us as the athletic department at the school, but also to the economic impact from, to our county. So what we look at is the total positive economic impact for this is around five million dollars per year, and that's people coming into Idaho County doing, you know, visiting these places, holding tournaments, and the ability to be able to do that with these type of surfaces as compared to what we currently have. Also, the estimated profit for facility's use is around a hundred and fifty thousand per school per year, which gives us the ability to then put some money back, to be able to have money prepared for when we do have to resurface, do the maintenance, et cetera, and I did provide them with the amateurization table, they showed each year what exactly had to be done, and the maintenance on these track facilities, the current upgraded track facilities is much less than what we currently have. What we currently have, you have to do maintenance about every three to five years, these you have up to fourteen years before you actually have to do things. So what we'll need to do with the potential profit, or where does it potentially come from, we're gonna have to adjust our facility's use to more accurately reflect, I mean, if you're renting a facility that has a turf field and a certain type of track, you're gonna need to adjust that usage fee. It doesn't mean it has to be outrageous, but it needs to be adjusted, because what we currently have right now is, is not reflective of what it would be. Profit's generated by allowing the facilities to be rented by organization, and the company that actually provided us with the data that showed us how much the potential profit was and the economic impact, what they essentially charge is about a ten percent fee, so they guarantee if you get a hundred and fifty dollars and scheduled, and they do all the scheduling, and they schedule it around. and they schedule it around your school events, so in your community events, that if you get $150,000 in profit, then they are gonna get $15,000. So that's kinda how that works. We have not gone into an agreement with anybody because we haven't gotten the project completely approved. And then the cost savings is where it really comes into. There's no maintenance cost over the first 13 years of ownership because of the type of services. And so after that, the initial cost of what you're putting into just the payment on the infields for the schools actually almost pays for what your initial investment, initial investment is. It's $13 million over a 24-year lifecycle. The potential facilities use profit also far exceeds the maintenance cost or the repair cost. And so when you look at this and you put it in an economic model, it's actually smarter to do this type of resurfacing to a track facility and an athletic stadium than it is to go with what we currently have. In other words, you might save money on the front end with a cheaper product, but you're gonna pay it back moreover in the long run by doing it a different way. And these products come with guaranteed life cycles. So just to give you kind of an idea, latex track surfaces that we currently own retire three times the maintenance as a Mondo track. Their average cost is over $130,000 more to own over 19 years. Grass infields cost on average over $300,000 more than to maintain a synthetic turf field. In a 10-year period, the turf has over 24,000 more playable hours. I mean, it's 24/7, you can play on it when it's wet, it automatically has drainage built-in underneath the facility, so it, it is an actual better upgrade than what you're actually currently doing. And we reduce our cost in utilities because we're no longer having to water the fields. This is just an example of what the field may look like at North Iredale that was drawn for us, a rendering. Even though it's not recommended, the track surface that we are looking at putting on is the only track surface that the warranty's not voided if you have to drive a vehicle on it. And if you've ever been to a high school football game, you've seen either a little bobcat, gator, or a car driving on there, and if EMS has to go out, that's it. I mean, so think about, you would spend a lesser cost for a product, and then as soon as you have a game, somebody drives on it, your warranty's void. This is the only product that doesn't do that, which is one of the reasons that we looked at it. It's also, it gives us the ability to host track invitationals and to host a regional event, which brings in a huge amount of people from around the state to come and be able to utilize that facility. Without having an eight-lane track, you're, you're not gonna be considered for that. Also, it's the only surface approved for repair Olympics. With turf, there's no downtime, rain doesn't impact it. We're looking at the ability to allow our middle schools to play there, which will help us cut down on cost of what we're having to spend on middle school facilities, because think about it, there's no longer gonna be any more reason to have to upkeep that field to an area that would be a high-playing area when they get to play their games at the high schools. And then you essentially build that community spirit by allowing the middle school kids the opportunity to play in the stadium that they hope to get to when they become students there. So I think it's a really good idea. Athletic tournaments that Iredale County families are traveling out of county, four we could host here, because it would give us the ability to also have lacrosse tournaments, and that is a huge deal if you've been in the southern end of the county. If we had a facility that was in that area, or even in Iredale County that could host lacrosse, you would have a lot of lacrosse tournaments going on. And they do like synthetic turf just because the amount of play games over and over and over on it. Upgrading facilities is not only for just our high school athletics, it's also for our physical education tracks, our classes, our youth athletic leagues, community organizations. We also have special Olympics that we host, or have hosted in the past. And so it does give us an ability to do that. Also, for incoming residents, they're looking at our facilities, and a lot of times, the places that they visit aren't inside the school building. I mean, I've got plenty of parents when I was a high school principal that never walked into the building, but I saw them every Friday when we had a football game, or when we had a soccer game. So that is a reflection on our schools, and it is a great way for us to be able to upgrade them. So that's the presentation. I tried to get as fast as I could, and respect you guys, Tom.
That was fast.
Yeah.
And, and I appreciate you. I talked to you last night a little bit about this, and I did some research today, and actually I'm, I'm pretty good friends with a couple of Panthers players, and I called Joy today, Joy Slade today, Sly today, and, and Brian Burns, and, and asked them what they like best, artificial or real grass, and, and they both told me real grass. So, so me personally, I would like to talk to a few more people, those are the only two I know with the Panthers, but I do know a couple with some other teams that, and that's, you know, the lighting, you, you've made me a seller on LED. I learned the hard way on LED from, from my light show. It's, it saves money, and that, it really does. So that's why I asked about the breakdown, the track, we've got to get that track fixed. I'm, I'm just not, I'm not sold on the, the turf yet, but that's just, that's me, I'm one.
So I didn't know I needed to bring samples, but it's essentially what the NFL, which we did research on this, and I brought it up at our committee of the hall meeting. The NFL generates quite a large profit, as you can imagine, from that organization. And so from the installers, the NFL does not install the highest level quality turf because they change their logos frequently, they change all sorts of things, and so that turf for them is only expected to be a three-year product. And so when they buy turf for their players, they do not buy the top-end highest quality. So they don't put iron turf on there. Iron turf is not that slick turf that we just seen a lot of NFL players talk out about. It's actually a product that looks very much like real grass. And many of our high schools, like Hickory High School and other surrounding areas, are putting it down because it actually has a higher concussion protocol. It's got a stronger or a softer pad underneath it, and what they're finding out is it actually reduces injuries than what you may have heard from an NFL player. So I didn't wanna clarify because we looked into that too. Like I said, this is over a year worth of research that I spent working on this to provide this to the school system so they would have.
And I appreciate your research, I would just try to do my own, and I'm, I'm still got a little bit more I wanna do. One other question for me, I don't mean to take up everybody's time. The, the, the track itself, you said is good for 14 years. Now what kind of warranty from the company do we get?
So the warranty for the Mondo track is a 10-year warranty.
Total?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any new estimates you can share with us about the new high school costs?
Does, does that, do you want me to bring that up as part of this? You wanna wait till we're done, and then we can talk about it?
No, I think, go ahead and move forward with that question because it all plays in together.
Sure.
Because we've gotta evaluate all of the capital needs too, so.
Well, I think when we talk about capital needs, one of the things that we do need to realize is that the new high school certainly is a concern for everybody, but being able to maintain our current facilities is also something that we have to do, and we have to balance those two things. So as, we were at the facilities or task force meeting, and we talked about several projects that we were taking off in an effort to be able to help the county be able to come up with another way to, to fund these. So I do think that I can see how all capital things are related, but I do wanna know that these two projects necessarily aren't connected to each other, because the safety and concern of the students at North Iredale High School and their athletic facility don't really have any impact on a new high school that's gonna be built, you know, we hope to be built. But I do understand that the cost of it's there, so.
While you're in that thought, I do feel that there is a correlation from the aspect of creating a track to that magnitude. Absolutely, I see the concerns of, I've spent a lot of time at North, so I'm well aware of the condition. However, does this project, needs to be considered as part of the whole plan because of the size of it? Because it is above and beyond what has been there in the past or currently? So there's a discussion I would like to have, meaning is this maybe a plan that should tie in with the new high school versus up at North?
So the new high school, when it was designed, we were asked by the steering committee that helped that to make sure that that school had an eight-lane track, and that it had synthetic turf field. And so that was part of the original design of that with that committee.
And our discussion in the past, if I can interject, is that would give you two high schools in the county, one in the north and one in the south, that has potential to be rented out, used for tournaments, and, and potential revenue boosters, is, that was the conversation.
For track, the facilities, even if you had a six-lane track and you have turf, you still can rent that facility and run track invitationals. It's just the eight-lane track allows you to branch into a much larger type of venue. So for example, you're gonna have bigger junior colleges and possibly even colleges that wanna come and utilize it for them, and you don't have that large of a facility. And so that is pretty common with districts around us that are actually upgrading their athletics. They're working with these organizations to schedule them so that they can get these tournaments and these, you know, track invitationals involved in. But I do see what you're saying, and so, Bert, I will be glad to give you an update. We did get back our estimates for the new high school. That does not include FFE, but the initial or the estimates, and again, these are estimates that haven't gone out to bid, was $169 million. Now, I did wanna make sure that we clarified about that because we've done a lot of work at the school level to try to reduce the cost of this high school and to be effective with what we're actually planning on building. So this building is a smaller square footage than most of our high schools. We are utilizing the classrooms four periods a day. Teachers don't actually have a designated room that they share. It's more of a collegiate model where they have a, a teacher area that they use, like an office type of space, that's an open cubicle area, and then they roam into classrooms. And so this model has been used. But just to kinda give you a breakdown of some data, I know that there, this is not funded by the county, but is funded by Statesville City, but the new fire department that is being built on two acres of land is currently around $10 million, which puts it, per square footage, the square footage of that building is roughly 2,600 square feet, and that building cost is about 380 per square foot. And that's just off of what we could find in just, you know, the paper. So I've heard that that project's up to about $13 million, which would put it about, you know, almost 400 for square feet. Now, the new high school is 25,000, 25,000 square feet, heated square feet, I mean, 250,000 squared, heated square feet, sorry. With our estimate of 169, we're over 100 acres of land that we have to develop, and we're at 350 per square foot. So we've really tried to reduce the cost and not reduce the quality of the building. I mean, the, the goal that we were tasked for was to create a building that would be less maintenance, and that it would be something that would last longer than what we had currently, I guess, built in the past. And so I, I know that that's what we were put into, and that the committee worked through that, and we worked through all that. So I do realize that is a challenge that we will all have to work together to figure out, and know that we will come up with a solution. You know, there's our, we're already brainstorming a lot of ideas. Like I had told Beth, I think that the next step is for us to get together and start to work on possible solutions for that, and exploring all those so that we can come up with a potential solution. So there, I know it's out there, and I know together we can get to, through that.
Do we have any plans for them to come during the retreat to talk to the new board members and our board about the way they designed that and why? And, because I know none of the, the scope of the project has changed, just the pricing due to the, all the different factors, and also not included in that would be a higher interest rate.
No, they're currently not on the agenda, but if the board wants to extend the retreat and, and have that conversation, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
I think we definitely have to extend the retreat, based upon title.
It, it's a healthy agenda, but yes, we could, we could go a little longer and have that added to the agenda if the board so wishes.
Tim's got all of the stuff he could explain to you guys that haven't been part of the discussion in the last couple of years.
Let's circle back around to where we're at with the, the track discussion, and then let's look back over to this, the retreat idea, because I think.
Y'all asked about the.
Oh, yeah.
So I was trying to get this scheduled for that, and then go back to that.
Absolutely. And I think it's gonna tie all in together when we put all these pieces together, but.
Yep, there was a, there was a couple things I just had questions about. One, you were talking about the, early on you showed where it was like 100,000 per year per school on the maintenance. But then I saw on another slide toward the end of savings, and it said roughly would save 300,000. And so I was sitting there, and that, that number didn't correlate correctly to me.
So there's two differences. It's the cost of operating them over time. So what, that's the difference between what it costs to keep your turf field up as opposed to over that period of time, and I don't remember the exact length of time. So it is, costs you more to have a grass field than it does to have a turf field over, and I think it was 14 years, but I'll have to look back to be exact. But it costs you 300 more thousand dollars to, to do that.
And that's, the savings that you projected, that 24 million that I was looking, is that just the one school, or is that all schools eventually getting?
You mean the profit?
With the profiting area. Is that just, is that, that 5 million, is that gonna be just North Iredale that you're gonna get, or is that, you're talking about bringing on both, both of those schools online?
The presentation I was asked to give that I showed you was for the committee of the whole, and they had asked me to show them a long-range plan for high schools. So that was the beginning of our conversation about how do we address this? So for North Iredale, if you put in the products that we have discussed, and you upgrade the facility, and you rent it out, it is estimated that it will have a positive $5 million economic impact to Iredale County. The company that did that said that if you then put one at, let's say, West Iredale, then it would go to potentially 10 million. They do say that after you get all the high schools on, you can't actually replicate each one because you're, you know, we're not growing quite that fast, thank goodness, that we would have that many people wanting to play tournaments at every high school that we have every weekend, all the time. But that is how that economic model is created.
Okay, so it was just for North Iredale?
It is just for North Iredale. And so the board did ask me to focus just on North Iredale, due to the fact that they're no longer holding, like, they told them that they will not hold track meets this year, and.
Bert, do you have any more questions?
I just want everybody to know that the initial bond was, what, 80 million?
80.
So now we're looking at 170 million. We are in a recession, if we're not, we're stepping into a recession. I think we're probably already there, and I think everybody will agree, I think even Tim, you'll agree with that. We're a growing county, I understand that. I understand we have a lot, a lot of needs, but I think we really need to take the time to look at which direction we need to go. Yes, this field needs to be done, the track field needs to be done, I think we can all agree upon that.
Right.
But we need to, I'll probably sit down and look at this thing and say, hey, these are our priorities, we know the school estimates come in, that will probably change, hopefully it will go down, but more than likely it will probably end up going up. So I think we need to do our due diligence there and maybe sit down and talk again possibly. What do y'all, what do you think, Jim?
That's why I wanted them to try and come and do a presentation and have a conversation, because we'll have more of a forecast from the retreat about where we're going, how to get there, and, and a long-range forecast, I believe, is some of the discussion.
A, a little bit, but I'll just say that the, the retreat where we'll talk a lot about budget will be actually in the end of February 1st of March. That's the one where we'll really have more numbers. But what we could do, if the board wishes, we could invite Iredale Statesville to come to the retreat, and we could talk about the capital improvement plan, because Mr. Ivy did send that to me on Friday.
And the board, not all the boards had a chance.
They have not, and so that was something that I was gonna distribute to the, to the board to, to look at, because that's something that was just updated by the school facility task force. And that is, if you recall, last year, the eight-year capital improvement plan that we have, we created one for the education entities as well, trying to make sure that we kind of have a good grasp of what's coming up for multiple years down the road. So I had given that to Iredale Statesville Schools, and Mr. Ivy has gone and updated that and sent an update on the end of last week. So i- if, if you want to talk about that and, and kinda go through that, because they've made some changes, they've taken some things off, they've updated some numbers, things of that nature, then we can certainly invite them to our retreat to, to go over that with the board and, and look at it, big picture, if you'd like to do that.
Commissioner Conley, just to clarify, the school district also had a facilities condition assessment done with the purpose of being able to look at all of our, our facilities so that we can make long-range plans, so that we actually had data to show these are the things that need to be done, so that we cannot essentially, we have something to back it up, and we have an outside organization that's tagged all of our major mechanical and allows us to say, hey, are we able to, with our budget, do some of these other deferred maintenance things that have been put off, like the tracks, like the playgrounds, like those things? Are we able to come up with a plan to afford those even though we have these other repairs that need to be there? And so I'll be glad to share that with you and work through that, or continue to work on that document and, and use that information regularly.
Mr. Ivy? Let's just say we could, we could, we're saying, if, we said yes, when would all of this happen, and how soon?
So the RFQ, which was for a design build, was already sent out, okay? We have already selected a group, and now we're in the negotiation phase with them. Of course, we can't actually sign any contract unless we. Of course, we can't actually sign any contract unless we would have a signed application that would be, allow us to send it to the DPI, and then DPI would actually hold on to it until they receive the actual design of what it's going to be. So they have to send them all the normal plans that you would for any kind of construction project. The timeline that we gave in the RFQ was that they would be able to be finished at the beginning or middle of September. So this project is planned to start the second kids walk across the stage and leave the stadium at North Iredale and be completed over the summer, as long as we can stick within our timeline.
We've got plenty of time.
What would Nor-, what would North football, and, so track season is...
Starts in the spring.
Track season starts February 15th.
Football season alternate, if it's going into September, is there an alternate that you've got in place that they would use?
So they currently would practice on their practice football field, which is just an area they have out by the, the stadium, and then we would work with them to make sure that they've scheduled away games until the field is complete, if it's not done ahead of schedule.
Is there no track at all available for this spring?
There is no track available at all for this spring, because they actually have to take the whole track and the field. I mean, they're going to bring in trucks and fill it up and take it away.
So does that mean track is not available for the students to participate, or you'll be having track at another facility?
So they will be able to participate in practice as long as they stay away from those designated areas, but they cannot hold any track events there. They can't hold their conference track meets or anything of that nature. So we're, they're not able to host a track meet, bring in profit, have their families be at their home site, and see them participate in a track meet at North.
Where would they be having their track meets?
They would just do away, is what they would, just schedule it where they won't be at home for the whole season, for an official meet. And that's, that's typically how it works. Schools schedule them away if they don't have a facility.
And you, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir. I was just, you're asking for 2 million out of the lottery. How much do you have in the lottery?
So the lottery is broken up into different pots. The pot that we would be pulling this out of has 2.3 million dollars in it right now. Each year we generate about a 1.6 to 1.7 million dollars in lottery funds. There are two other lottery funds that they've given us. One is a renovation fund. It currently has about 300,000 dollars in it. And then we were given an athletic facilities grant that is about 149,000 dollars, and we're looking at utilizing that for doing an upgrade at another facility right now. So that money is not something we have to do a withdrawal from. It was a grant that was given to all the schools in the state. And so those funds, we just have to come up with an appropriate project and get approval for it, but that's what we're looking at.
I think that, you know, as we talk about the schools, it's, there's, there is a lot of need, and we talked about a lot of things, being safety and security issues. You know, we hear 169 million, 800,000 dollars, I think was the total number, 170,000 dollars.
70 million, yes.
170 million, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. I just missed three zeros, I'm sorry.
Zeros don't count.
You know, and, and that's a tough bill to swallow. I'm sitting here as a taxpayer thinking of, of the future, but I'm also sitting here thinking about children, that one of the best things that they have is, is their athletic programs, whether they're participating or they're attending, and that pride that they have in their home. So as, as, as difficult as it is for me to say that I want to spend money knowing that we've got other money spent somewhere else, you know, these, these kids at North and, and deserve a good experience, so. I don't know if it's appropriate, I'm going to do this, but I make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion on the floor. However, there is also discussion to further inform us at the retreat.
Now, I thought the, what further inform us of the retreat was about the overall school as far as the other buildings.
About all the money.
And all how this would play in, because what you haven't received, or all the commissioners have not received, Brad, you did receive it at the Facilities Task Force meeting, all how it all plays out, the updated where there was projects removed and discussion of where we're going, so...
No, I don't think it's a big, big problem if we tabled it to give us just a little more time to discuss and whether we did it tonight or next, next meeting, just, just a little bit more time, because like I said, I just found out about this last night and, and, I mean, when I did my study.
So you'll table it to the 16th at our retreat?
No, 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 to the next meeting.
What do you suggest, Lisa?
I, I was just going to say that, remember, this is an item that you're considering for the consent agenda, so you don't necessarily need the formal motion to approve. You just need to agree to put it on consent or take it off of consent.
I'm sorry.
So if we put it on consent, it's pretty much approving it to move forward.
Correct.
With the project.
And I would like to say, and I certainly respect the decision that you guys make, but I did want you guys to know, I mean, what essentially this is, is our board has already approved, and then in normal circumstances, to make a withdrawal from lottery, then this is brought to the commissioners, and all it requires is the signature of the chair. And then you have to turn it in for a withdrawal. Now, it, it does say that there's a, you know, that there is a joint agreement on this, but I just want to, you know, encourage you guys so that we can continue with our timeline for this. We look at this separated from the high school, because this money here is money that is sitting in our lottery account that is for utilizing for our students, and we have to continue to take care of the facilities we have. I, I know that we have a big project that has to be done, and that is something that we're all going to have to face that challenge, but we can't stop what is currently happening at our schools and not meet the needs of the students who are currently in the building for a building that's going to shoot, serve for future students. I mean, so I do understand that, and we're trying to be good stewards of the, the money because we have, as the board, the Iredale Statesville School Board has done, is they've tried to take on multiple projects in an effort to not have those be responsibilities of the county, so that you guys could free up funding for the new high school.
And absolutely, we, not neglecting the needs of the students. It wasn't that long ago when we supported the request for the transfer of the 4 million up to 7 million, which really addressed some critical needs on that as well. So with that being said, though, I just want to be sure we're all in support and excited about a project. Not that I want to run track again, but it's, we still have a motion on the floor.
It was not a motion.
That's right. We have still got consent.
I withdraw my motion. We just need to know how many consent, how many don't consent, but that's, that's what we're...
Basically, you have two options. You could either approve to consent to approve this, or you could table it for further discussion at the retreat. I think those are the two, two options that have been discussed.
I mean, from my perspective, I'll just wait, and at this point, that's my task force as well. The projects that he's talking about, because of liability, safety concerns, they're not, the school is not being able to use it for this upcoming season. Those lottery funds, it's going to have to be done, and they're, they're using the lottery funds, and there could be discussion, as you were talking about, to where you could use some of their capital lottery funds towards the new high school. But in this particular case, from my perspective, is the parents and the taxpayers in the north end of the county expect their school to be safe and functional, as all the others. So I would support consent and moving forward with this request, just based on that, from a perspective of, it's one of those things, we've all waited as long as we can wait, and it's now not usable because of risk, safety risks. That's, I just want to keep that in concern.
And I don't disagree with you, except for the fact that I'm just saying, why don't we just, I mean, table it for two weeks? I mean, just, let's talk about it some more. I, I don't buy a car when I first go look at it. I, I got to go home and think about it. I would like to meet, this one, I want to think about it a little bit, but it's, it's the majority, so.
Timeline-wise, what did you say that you would start on?
So with the timeline, what'll end up happening is, if it is tabled, we will not be able to go into an agreement with any corporation, so we essentially put this project completely on hold. So anytime we delay it, we may put it back a month, so it may put us back even further. So I, I just can't, we can't go into a negotiation with anybody on a firm price and have our superintendent sign a contract if we need to wait until the next meeting to receive approval for it.
Is your concern, Commissioner Brown, the, the type of turf, or that was your main concern?
My main concern, it's not, the track needs to be done, and I'm all for 100%. We broke this thing out in two parts, and I understand what he's saying of not being able to cross it, but if, my thing is, we could take the same amount of money and go fix track here, track here, and lighting here, and lighting here, and not do turf at any of them, and deal with that at a later time, you know, and I understand what you're saying, but that's just, as a general contractor, you know, there's always a way over things, I can promise you. We, we make things happen. But that, that's just my concern, and I, like I said, I'm just one, but that's, that's why I would like to think about it. I don't like, even in Congress, I don't like when they bring bills in there and, you know, put stuff, 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 and then they throw another one in there. I, I want to, I like them one at a time, and I know, that's why I asked you, does it all have to be done at one time? The lighting, that's a no-brainer. We need to do lighting at all of them instantly. But, but, and the track's got to be done for safety reasons. I'm just not set on the grass, the turf fields. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. My biggest concern is the, the overture of the high school, and I know that should not reflect anything, but I'm trying to look after almost 200,000 in the county. The north track field, it needs, it needs to be done. I mean, I went to school there, graduated '92, that tells you how old I am, which I'm not that bad, I'm good. That's a big, that's a big hurdle. That's a big sticking point, and I think if we do invite them to the retreat, I think you need to bring your CFO with you all, and we maybe have a, a sit-down and figure out how we're going to pay for this high school.
I agree, and...
Look at the, the seat capacity at West, because we spoke about that a little bit last week. We need to be looking a lot, a lot of angles. I know a lot of those angles are yours, but when you come to us, we're the ones that show out that money.
Absolutely, and I agree. I think that we need to start working together more closely than we already have to start to come up with feasible solutions for the high school, and I do believe that it's out there. I just think we've got to make sure we don't leave any stone unturned, and I appreciate you guys wanting to do that and to show the taxpayers of Iredale County the due diligence that we're putting into that, because it is a very large ticket item, and we have taken that very seriously. So, you know, it's hard for me not to want to make sure that the facilities that we have are taken care of, knowing that that's there, but I ultimately have to put it back into what I said earlier. I have to take care of the students and the families who are currently in the buildings with the safety needs that they have, and then address those things. I can't leave things unturned or undone just because there's this project out here that is over budget than what we anticipated, ever imagined it to be. It is very important for me to do this, and I understand and I appreciate your concerns, Commissioner Brown, about that turf. I did, I had the same concerns. Like I said, I've done an extensive amount of research on this to make sure that any quality product that we put, or any product that we put down has the highest quality and will give us the longest life and cost savings for people as Iredale County, because you don't want to put something down that is going to create problems.
So Mr. Ivy, when you were doing your research for the, for the track, what drew you to the conclusion to do it at the level that it's at versus just making it repaired, available, and moving along, and still not moving, doing it at a 3.7 million dollar level?
So when you look at the track facilities and you have to go in and to make a decision, as Commissioner Brown was saying, as a general contractor, there's a way you could go along and push it down the road. We're past that point with our tracks. We've pushed them down the road so far that now we're at the point where we're going to have to actually pull up the substructure of the tracks and repave everything. So after consulting with them, what we found was, when you put that in, if you do not plan for that turf field, you're not going to put that turf field back in later. What you're going to put in is some subversion of that. It's going to limit your ability to put in certain types of products, because you either have to start with that in mind. If we replace the track with the current surface that we have, which is a synthetic like latex with chip rubber that's thrown on top of it, if you replace the tracks with that, it is cheaper, but it actually costs you more money in the long run because of the repair cycles. And if I would have known that you guys needed all that, I would have been more than happy to provide you all of those tables.
We are very inquisitive.
Sure, and I don't mind, I can share that with, with Beth, and she can send that out to you guys, but it clearly shows that if you put down a latex track, within three years, you're going to be back maintaining it again, because you're going to have an area that has to be upgraded. Then you're going to be back doing that again in three more years, and so on, for the life of that track. And then you have to pull up the top of it. I mean, we broke it all down, so what happens is, over the lifetime, because of the warranties of the facilities, you actually save money by putting in a better product on the front end than you do of putting in something that would just push it down the road. And so we did look at that and actually took our budget and budgeted it out for our time period, if we were to follow a track a year, and said, would we be able to do this if we end up having to do this? Like, could we fund it with what we're appropriated from the county and be able to try to make these upgrades to our facilities?
Talking to some of my former teammates that played in NFL, that played college with me, they mentioned that, because, you know, in past years, there's been all kinds of studies done for concussion protocols, prevention, and one of the biggest issues from the Players' Association in the NFL was they don't use the best turf because they change it more frequently. So the teams, if there's a place that they're cutting back, I guess you'd say, because of financial reasons with the change of advertising and things like that, they're jeopardizing the long-term safety from, the Players' Association thinks that. That's, I think Commissioner Brown was talking about the difference between grass and turf. The players would rather play on grass than the cheaper turf, but if you do the appropriate, the best turf with the softer underlay and all of that, that, it costs more upfront, but it's better overall for a lot of things. But what I want to just mention is, historically, the, you know, they've got 30-some buildings that they have to maintain. The high school is, the new high school discussion has got to be had, and it's, it's a major one. But we've got to keep in mind, we've got to allow maintenance and, and things for the other facilities that are existing. These things have been put on hold until there's no longer a way to use them. I'm okay either way with tabled any or moving ahead with it, but for the same purposes, when the sheriff was here earlier and other things, you be proactive or you can be reactive. Our constituents in the north end expect their school students, I have kids at North, in full disclosure, to be functioning and have the high school experience instead of having to go to other facilities, because, because the revenues weren't invested to maintain the facility. And so we can't stop maintenance on the other facilities while we're discussing the elephant in the room for the new school. I just wanted to just mention that. If, if a two-week delay brings Commissioner Brown or others in support of it, but due to whatever research y'all need to provide, I'm okay either way, depending on the board, but I think it's got to be done, no matter what time to do it.
One thing I'd like to see the numbers on is, and I hate patching, I really do, and I don't, I like doing things right, but in a situation like this, and the way it's done, I'd like to know what it costs to patch it, if it's only three years. Patch it to get us by till we get this high school built and take the money.
Said the subsurface won't allow patching any longer.
We can no longer patch North Iredale. And the other tracks are, are right behind that. So we did go down that, is could we just resurface them? So these have been in for such a long time. I mean, it's not like we just repaved them five years ago. These tracks, the subsurface was repaved, I believe it's almost 12 to 15 years ago. And so the asphalt under, the asphalt underneath is actually giving way in many of the places at our tracks. And so this is something that's going to have to be addressed one way or the other, and so regardless of what surface you put on top of it, you still have to repave the underlying of it, whether you put it in concrete, asphalt, you know, the surface you put on top of it, you may save money on that, but you spend more money on the cheaper subs, I mean, cheaper top surface than what you do with this. And like I said, those surfaces, the warranty is void on them, so we're no longer able to repair Norris. That's why Norris is brought, was the first one that we selected.
All right. We've learned a lot about track. Thank you so much. We've learned a lot about track. Thank you so much. And yes, the need is apparent. I believe what the conversation, it all is so interwoven, because there's always going to be a what's next for what needs to be done. And I think that I would like to table this request, several reasons, not in support of the track, or not, right, in favor of that.
Y'all supported.
Right, right. So, with that, I'm trying to eloquently say that we need to use this discussion to further the conversation with where are we going to get money to cover everything that needs to be done, including this, including what comes next, in support of every school in this county, in addition to building a new one. And I believe the retreat would be a great place, because you are wealth of knowledge and everything from the track, to the lights, to what needs to be done. But when the money runs out in that lottery and we have a what's next, how do we face that? So, I believe that can be addressed on top of this at a retreat. So, I would like to ask that we table this. Do we have an opportunity for the Long Range Capital Improvement Plan in the hands of all the commissioners to further the discussion and bring your wealth of knowledge? And I really would appreciate that. So, I'm going to ask the board if we're comfortable with tabling until the retreat.
Yeah, I'm for tabling.
So, again, full disclosure, and neither one of my children or grandchildren participate in track at north. So, full disclosure, there is personal involvement. But I am for table. I will agree to table. But, you know, the thing, and this is very difficult for me. I came into here tonight before you spoke to me, ready to know. You did a very good job. The need is great, so that we can get the full answers. I'm hoping what you'll be able to do is still be able to get this done, and it be still usable for the fall sports with the two-week delay. Understand, you don't know that answer.
I don't know that that'll be able to be done.
I will, you know, as I came into this, but as I listen more and, you know, this is a funny thing, you get what gets laid on your heart as you hear some of the things. And I have not, so I agree to table, so we can hear more about it.
And Tim, you, great presentation. Thank you for having additional slideshow on that one, too. So.
So, for our clarification purposes, does that mean that this would be approved on that date? Because we, in a normal circumstance, without the high school, as Commissioner Hop called, the elephant in the room, this is something that would normally be approved and moved on, because once the board, you know, the school board has to actually request the lottery money, and then the lottery money has to be approved by the county commissioners. So, I've got contractors and other people that I'm going to have to tell them that the timeline has now changed. So, is there a way, I mean, is it going to be voted on on that date, or do we have to come back? When would be the next time that I could get?
It could occur one of two ways. It'll be discussed on the 16th, but we have a board meeting again on the 20th. So, you will have a decision at the absolute latest on the 20th. So, that's, I mean, they could make a decision on the 16th. They could make a decision on our next board meeting on the 20th.
So, in theory, we could make a decision that they walk out with on the 16th?
And then take and make action on the 20th.
Yeah. I mean, you could approve it on the 16th.
Yeah, I mean, I believe, I'm looking in our attorney, you could go ahead and approve.
You table it now, you can approve it.
You tabled it for the 16th for further discussion. You can make a decision on the 16th, or you could wait and make a decision on the 20th if the board chooses. It's your option. Is that correct?
Well, I'd like for it to be clear as to where you're tabling it to. If you're tabling it to the 16th, then if you're not going to make the decision on the 16th, then you're going to table it again to the 20th.
Correct.
You have the option for the 16th.
You can approve it on the 16th.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and just for the new board members, you probably were at meetings when we discussed this, but part of our legislative goals for the NCAACC have been, the schools, the legislature approves some capital funding, grant funding, that goes through DPI and the lottery proceeds annually. But tier-three counties typically don't get fair consideration, in my opinion. And we had asked, I had made a motion that failed by several votes, to allocate 20% of those funds annually to tier-three counties. And naturally, the 80% of the, there's 40 tier-ones and 40 tier-twos and 20 tier-threes out of 100 counties in North Carolina. And so, we're trying to get legislation changed to that perspective. But at a minimum, right now, Tim cannot apply for grant funding for projects that we start on. And so, we're trying to get that changed to where you can continue to apply for projects, even if you start on them. And where we were going with that is, if we could get some long-term commitments that would help pay the debt service, like on a high school, on amount of money that may be borrowed to complete that project. And so, we're working on that with our legislators and our legislative goal for the NCAACC, but I wanted y'all to know that. They've been applying, we've applied and prayed, and all that we can control in trying to get the legislation to support that, to where we're not being punished as a tier-three county.
Thank you.
I think we just want a very clear picture of where we are, how much money we have, where we're going to be going. So, if we can talk about that in the retreat.
Sure.
I think that would be wonderful. I think that would help everybody.
You're looking for our current budget that we have now, or?
Not necessarily that. Our needs of where, you know, we spoke last week just briefly about our needs. We need to look at those needs and see how much. We've got a revow that's coming up, okay?
Yes.
We've got a huge revow in the middle of the recession, like I spoke about a while ago, whatever we're in. I just want to make sure that we're doing every project we need to. The north track field, it will get done, okay? It will get done. It's made us delay it a week or so, but you'll have your answer very, very soon. And I think we can do our due diligence and give Scotty time enough to kind of check out some things, and it just helps us all out, I think.
I think what they're looking for, Tim, is, correct me if I'm wrong, is, you know, when you give the comprehensive update of what Beth and them have, and they met last week with you guys, Brad went in my place, and I think what will be helpful is some type of timeline about what y'all have approved that's funded already, or at least earmarked funding for that, and then what monies may be available, if any, to help pay debt service on the new high school over time. You're looking for things like that, because you've got that forecast for phases, five-year, 10-year, whatever, that we need to identify revenue streams, either by y'all or us or somebody, to take care of these needs. I think that's what he's wanting. You see a good forecast of where we are, where we're going, and how we got paid for it.
If you look at the estimate of the new high school, you know, right around the 170 million. You know, basically, we've got $80 million to write a check. But we need to write that check for 170. It's going to bounce. We just got to figure out very, very quickly how we're going to get this going, because we're growing. And the need's there, and it's very there. But we just want to make sure that we're comfortable, and we make the decision, and we pull that, write that pin, we make sure that we're doing it right, and we're doing our due diligence.
Commissioner Brown, feel free to stop by Facilities and Planning. I have plenty of turf samples. You're more than welcome to check those out. Invitation's open to anyone that you'd like to stop by. I'll show you, so you can actually see what we're referring to. Okay?
I appreciate that.
I see.
Something that somebody sat in this chair one time told me, that get prepared to sometimes hold your nose and make a vote. And I'll tell you, it's kind of where I feel even taping this, but I get it. I'm sick to my stomach with what we got to spend.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is item 8.6, and this is a request from Bryan Lloyd and Lloyd LLC to utilize high-density option to allow the development of garage units on property owned by Alice B. Stillwell, and render a decision concerning the request for the utilization of the high-density option. This request is contingent on the rezoning that will occur at 7:00. So, I don't know if the board wants Mr. Todd to kind of talk to you a little bit about this now, with the understanding there can't be a decision on it until a decision is on the rezoning, or just wait and do it following.
We can wait it all together.
Okay, that works. So, that one will be discussed at the 7:00. The next item is a request from administration for approval of a contract with FL Bloom for the Government Center Exterior Renovation Project. Mr. David Salivi is here to make this presentation to the board.
Thank you. I'll briefly go over what these projects are, and then I'll open up for questions, discussion, but I will not.
What makes you think we'd ask a bunch of questions?
Well, I'm just sitting back there anticipating. And if the size of the agenda packets has something to do with questions, out of 190 pages you had, 120 of them are mine. So, I will go briefly, and then you can just do whatever you need to do, Commissioner Brown. In September, the board approved a contract for the renovation of, with FL Bloom, for the renovation of the exterior of this building, 123 years old. The contract was for 1 million, $935,000, and 1 million, $935,300. And that was a base bid, plus a $35,000 alternate to replace the windows in the 1936 wing, which is right behind you. The entire project with contingency, 6% contingency, was 2 million, $88,520. The board approved that, and there was an amendment to the capital project fund of that amount at that time. What we've been doing since then is working, ironing out the details of the contract with FL Bloom, which was in your packet. And I'm here to answer any questions, and what we're asking the board to do tonight is approve that contract with FL Bloom to start this work, hopefully January 3rd.
Brad, this is one of those historical times you hold your nose, but Beth will tell you, we started this project and you have to do it. We have a responsibility to maintain the building. And David's done a great job working with people, because you only can use certain people that have the skillset to put it back like it was. You get it. You lived, you were in the building.
I get it. I live through the jackhammers in my corner door. So, you know, I get this one. So, this one is, I don't have to hold my nose near as bad for this one.
All right. So, with that being said, do we have any additional questions?
We beat this one to death already, and?
Oh, yeah.
I've got a nice slide presentation, if you'd like me to drag on.
Just got to do what you got to do.
But you've seen it before.
We're good with trusting you.
I think you've seen it twice.
To clarify, what you all need to do is not only approve the contract, but authorize someone to sign it, typically.
The manager. Consent to the contract with the manager's authority to sign.
Execute it. Good on that?
Yes.
Consent?
Consent, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How easy that was.
We're not finished yet.
Uh-oh.
The next item is a request from administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 27 to consider proposal from Fuller Architectural for ICATS project, NEPA SD Design. And Mr. Salivi is here to make this presentation to the board.
In October, the county put out for an RFQ for design and all of the federal red tape to prepare for the new ICATS facility. There's a tremendous amount of work that has to be done, because it is federal funded. And so, we put out early October and had, we didn't have anyone respond back. So, we put out again about the 28th, I think, and the deadline was the 28th of October. And we had two firms respond. One of them was Fuller Architectural out of Knoxville, the other one was GL Wilson. Fuller, we had a project team that, or a review team, that reviewed the RFQs and voted on presenting Fuller Architectural to you as the firm that would do all the work to prepare us for construction, which would be more of a GL Wilson bid-type project. So, with all that said, you have the proposal from Fuller. I think I presented most of this to you last meeting, but the proposal from Fuller lays out the details and the scope of this first phase of work. And so, what we're asking tonight is to approve a budget amendment, which you have in your packet, to, for $237,830 to move forward with Fuller Architectural on a contract for the ICATS project, Phase 1. And I think, Lisa, as you said, and approve or authorize the manager to sign the contract with them as soon as we can get it in. Now, we've got a very, very tight timeline, because we're working with an end date of September for this $4 million grant that would come from the federal government. But if we back it up, this part of the project has to be done by March. So, we, that is, that is the, that's the speed that we're moving. So, that's why we're asking, go ahead and let, if you approve Fuller to move forward with this, and let, authorize the managers to sign, actually, the AIE contract with them.
And do we start with the 270-some thousand comes out of our million dollars that we're putting in, or does that come out of the grant?
That, Beth, I want you.
It's going to come out, we're asking for it to come out of the grant. And again, because this is a, we're getting a federal grant, so these are federal requirements. So, we're requesting for these funds to come out of that federal grant.
It still pertains to us getting the land.
Correct. Yes. And again, this is that federal grant that we receive.
We're still in the same spot. We're just moving forward.
Yes, correct.
Keep moving forward.
All this work has to be done before we can even approach the property.
Correct, yeah.
And that is, and that's federal guidelines.
Federal guidelines for federal grants.
Every time you bring it up.
That's fine. I'll keep answering the best I can.
I want you safe.
Can we call a party when we purchase land?
No questions?
I will.
Good. Consent?
Consent.
Thank you.
The next item is the County Construction Projects Update. This is just for informational purposes, and we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have on any of these projects.
David gives us these every month, and if you have questions, Beth usually wants us to let her know by when you get your packet or questions. We can individually talk to David, but it keeps us up to date on where everything is. Thank you, David.
Most of the time, if you look at the spreadsheet that you received, any changes from the last time that you looked at it is in yellow.
Yeah.
Everything else is the same as before.
We appreciate that. It makes it easy to understand as well.
Just look for the yellow.
Thanks, Dave.
Any additional comments?
The next item was a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of the 2023 meeting calendar, and that is in your packet as well.
Thank you, David.
And just a reminder that there are two months for 2023, that we have one meeting, and that July is one, and then the other is in November. So, every other month, we have two meetings a month, the first and third Tuesdays, except for July, we will have the second meeting in that month, and then November as well. We do also have the proposed retreats. Now, these are proposals, and when we get closer to, if we need to slide these dates, but we just went ahead and put kind of a placeholder on that calendar for you.
Any additional comments? Consent?
The final item is a request from administration for approval of a two-year contract with County Attorney Lisa Valdez. The board appointed her, reappointed her, and this is just the approval of that contract that goes with the reappointment.
We've got a lot of questions on this one.
Should we take this or not, ma'am?
Yes, tell us. Tell us. Are we getting a good deal? Can you tell us?
Absolutely. Do I have consent?
Jet consent.
And that's all the items for the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have any announcements and vacancies?
We do have two. We have three announcements for the Animal Grievance Committee, and then we have one announcement for the Recreation Advisory Board.
Okay. Any appointments to the boards or commissions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any unfinished business? No. Okay. It is not the public comment period. Any new business?
Did y'all have any updates, or were you going to wait till the retreat from task?
Just retreat, yeah. All right. Can you give us a little bit of a county manager's report?
Absolutely. I can give you a quick preview to that. One is to just remind the board that our fall retreat is scheduled for Friday, December 16th. Will begin at 9:00 a.m., and it will be at Cooperative Extension. So, the agenda will be coming out the end of this week with your packet. Good thing we haven't already sent it out, because we just added something to it. So, but we'll be getting that out to you later this week. And just a placeholder on your calendar, the annual employee and retiree, we're going to start our luncheon again. We took a couple of years off for COVID. So, we're starting our appreciation luncheon again, and the date for that is Tuesday, January 24th. It will be at the Civic Center, so just mark your calendars. 24th. It will be at the Civic Center, so just mark your calendars. But after the holidays, we'll send out formal invitations, things of that nature.
And that was in the morning or lunch?
It's a lunch. It's a lunch.
For retirees.
So for employees and retirees, yes. And again, Tuesday, January the 24th. The other two things, I know I had sent an update out to the board and there were two items that there was some conversation about that possibly the board wanted to discuss again. One is the Bluefield Road property. If you'll recall, we had listed that for sale. We received an offer. We did, went through the upset bid process, received 10 upset bids, had the property under contract and that buyer has decided not to move forward for financial reasons. Vice Chair Conley made the comment about in a recession, if we're not in it, we're close to it. Well, that, that's a good sign of those comments. So the board needs to make a decision if we want to relist that property or what we want to do. We have a contract with the real estate agent through, I'm looking at Ms. Valdez, through the end of this month. It expires the end of this month. And I did notify the board that we did have a local government entity ask us if we were interesting and looking, interested in looking at other options for that property with some type of joint project. So just kind of need some direction from the board, what you want to do with Bluefield Road.
We need to relist it.
Relist.
Relist. We want to sell it. Or is that an option?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is that an option, stay with that same person or that same?
With the realtor? Yes, we're still under, we still have a listing agreement, which is good through the end of the month. We can go ahead and relist it. We can go ahead and do that. And then if we get an offer, we'll go through the upset bid process.
Essentially contacting previous folks that were interested in the property originally?
Because we did receive several bids.
Yep. Reach back out to, request our real estate agent to reach back out to those who were prior interested.
Okay.
I see where they're at.
Do you want us to go ahead and approve you to sign an extension if necessary with that realtor?
Let, let's go through, I think let's go through and we get closer to the end of the month. If we get no interest, then I'll bring that back to the board and, and we can do it that way if that's, if that's okay with the board. So the, and everybody agrees by consensus to.
Consent.
Okay. So the next item was a conversation. I'd sent out an update to the board regarding Parks and Rec and the need to fill that director position and needing some, needing some guidance regarding the fairgrounds because there was a, there was two different proposals regarding the fairgrounds. One proposal is to create an authority that will oversee the fairgrounds and I sent some information out to the board regarding an authority. It's a separate governmental entity that would be created by the county, but it would be separate and apart from the county. So that's one option. The other option is to set up the fairgrounds as a special revenue, similar to SSD, solid waste, things like that. Set that up as a special revenue in a special revenue fund and have that as a division under Parks and Recreation. So I just need some guidance from the board as far as which direction you want to go because that does impact me filling that director position. I don't think it would be fair to fill the director position and do that later. I think they need to know what they're kind of coming into. And we also really need to decide the direction of the fairgrounds as we go through this master plan and as we apply for grants and things of that nature. Some grants may be, may be different depending on the, the overall organization that runs and operates the fairgrounds. So we need to have full disclosure with those grants.
Do we have the fairgrounds on the agenda for the retreat?
No.
I'd like to see us do that because I know Melissa and I, other than your updates, the new guys, we just need a full, comprehensive discussion as to what, where you guys are on the fairgrounds. And I think if we're able to do that, and then I think the board's got to make some decisions as to, you know, if the fairground is going to remain where it's at. If not, what are those options? What a budget looks like. I think y'all had a presentation about a blueprint of what could go there.
I sent an update out to the board regarding our fairgrounds meeting and there were, basically it was talking about the site, the soils, if there's any rock there. You know, we have about 11 million dollars for phase one, how far that money could go. And I had sent that update out to the board regarding that. The board has previously made a, made a decision, unless the board wants to go back, that the fairgrounds will stay where it is. But if the board wants to go back and revisit that, it's definitely the time to do it before we move forward with master planning because we've already had the consultant go out and do a site assessment.
I'd like to leave it where it is too. I just, I just think we just need to be updated of where we are and what potential.
I'd be glad to bring them up to date.
As I say, I think.
On 16th or tonight or whenever.
The 16th would be a good, I'm just saying, looking at her request on the, on the Parks and Rec Director, I agree she, she needs to fill that. But you're saying that you can't fill it or you don't want to give them additional tasks after they did it?
I'm saying that to, well, let me show you. This is kind of the organizational, I did an org chart to kind of show what it could look like. Look at, and I'll wait till everybody If you look at this organizational chart, everything except for what's in the yellow on your far left-hand side, that is the current structure and that is how Parks and Recreation is set up. Okay? So the two green boxes at the very top on either flanking the Parks and Rec Director position, that's our construction project manager, which is a part-time position, which is Mr. Salivi that's helping with Jennings Park and those construction projects. The other is the Recreation Advisory Board, which is a volunteer board. So the rest, everything that is in blue, that is our current department and the different divisions that we have set up in that department. Everything in purple, that is our recreation center and we've set that up to, with a goal of it being in a separate budget. So that has its own separate budget, but it's still all under the Parks and Rec Director. It has a recreation center manager that's on site and then it has staff, but it's still all under the Parks and Rec Director. What is proposed is similar to how we have the recreation center set up. If you look on the far left-hand side, would be the fairgrounds. And you would have a fairgrounds manager that would be over the fairgrounds, similar to your recreation manager for your recreation center. And then you would have support staff. The fairgrounds, however, would be set up as a special revenue fund. And that means that it would be a self, self-supporting. Once we get it up and going, it's going to take us a little while because we're going to completely redesign and develop it. But the goal would be to set that up as a special revenue fund. And the best example I can give you is EMS. We have EMS, we have the 911 emergency division, and then we have SSD. SSD is a special revenue division under EMS. It pays for itself and it generates revenue. And then the revenue, it pays for all of the staff, the vehicles, everything that supports SSD, and then some excess actually goes to help make debt service payments of the public safety facility that they're in. And they also pay for things for the 911 division as well, the bikes for our bike team and all of our special things that we do. So it generates revenue that helps supplement the 911 side. So what the proposal is, is to set up the fairgrounds the same way as a division. Well, if you look at this, this is, these are various different categories and you, you really need someone that has that knowledge and expertise of how to make this fairgrounds a profitable event center to generate revenue, similar to the recreation center. What's in red on this, your Parks and Rec Director position is red. It's a vacant position. We, we've received notice from our assistant director, has received a great job opportunity and is leaving on the 16th. And then we have another position that will be soon vacant. So I've got to get leadership in that department. That position has been vacant and our assistant director has been the interim for several months, more than she planned on being. I've got to get leadership and get this position filled. But in order to do and manage all of this, specifically adding the fairgrounds to it, that's a, that's a unique skill set that, that we have an applicant that would be very good for that.
We're going to lose him.
But if, if that's not going to happen, then maybe that's not the right person for this position, if that makes sense. So if the board is looking at doing an authority, fairgrounds would not be a county department and it would be separate. So kind of need direction from the board on that because I need to know what skill set for the individual that I put in this Parks and Rec Director position. And I've got to have some leadership out there because I'm losing my interim and assistant on the 16th. So that's why the 16th is, kind of gives me heartburn because I need to give this staff, I need to let them know leadership is coming and help is coming.
That was my question, I guess, is if we decide we're not going to do an authority, it changes, this person then is the one you want. If you're going to do an authority, that person might not be.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
Maybe not.
So the decision.
The bigger, the bigger issue is, are we wanting an authority or do we want to manage ourselves? And my understanding is if we go with authority, we're still going to have the same expenses. We're going to put the money into it, but then we're going to lose control.
Yeah, you won't, you won't be recouping the, you won't be, you won't be generating any revenue. It won't come back to the county. It will go to that authority.
So I guess the first thing then, do we need to make, do we need to make a motion to either create an authority or maintain it? That's the first thing, I guess.
That was my request is to let Scotty and Beth bring us all up to speed on the 16th or.
And I'd like to make the motion that we set up Arado County Fairgrounds as a special revenue fund through the Parks and Recs.
And I, there's, I can't see a situation where I believe that the authority would be a better situation. So I, I mean, I'm in 100% agreement.
Want to hear the, the presentation of the options of an authority. We've not heard that.
I'm reaching, reading through the information on the authority and familiarizing. We've been discussing authority and the revenue, special revenue for a good while.
Who's been discussing that? We've not been part of their committee.
No, it has been brought up to our attention multiple times. Even General Mallory had discussed on that, the opportunity.
That's what I'm saying. At some point, there was intention to brief the entire board and now the new board as well on where the, where the committee has gotten to and where they are today.
Authority doesn't give us the, the revenue flexibility.
It goes into a revenue and they, those funds would be used for the fairgrounds, poured back into the fairgrounds. The county commissioners would always have final say over the authority.
Okay. Well, we.
The authority just basically makes decisions for day to day, correct?
Actually, the authority is a separate governmental entity that's separate and apart from the county. It's not owned or controlled by Arado County. It is a separate governmental entity that's created.
Right. But I thought there were different options of an authority to where you didn't have to have to that level.
And, and an authority would have to have, for example, an authority still has to follow governmental accounting through the local government commission. So they would have to have their own accounting, own accounting principles, their own audit, their own.
It's another level of government bureaucracy.
It's another governmental entity.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
So what you guys are saying is you're okay with moving forward, having the SSD under the fairgrounds and the skill set of the person she's talking about.
And that person would be joining us right away once we hire them and this is what we're doing. And like I said, I was on the phone today for four hours with different groups that I'm, I'm trying to work with to bring it back to you guys because there's so much. And honestly, I'm busy. So I would love for this person to be making those phone calls and I can tell them who to call. We've got to get started.
Regardless of this, I know she needs to fill that. I agree. That needs.
And we give the, if we give it to the authority, it's theirs. Okay? I mean, it's still governmental and I get it. But let's just say we bring it in and we make part of Parks and Rec and we see that it's not the perfect fit. We can always change that.
Flexibility is still there.
That's what I was going to say. You could always go there.
If you decide later, you don't, you're tired of dealing with the fairgrounds and you want to set up authority and get rid of it, you can do that later.
Or, or you could put it, it's all department.
Yes. You created it as an own.
For the interim, while we're deciding what we're going to do and when we're going to do it and how we're going to pay for it, this person is the go-to under this structure. And you could always.
Right.
Add the other later. It doesn't prohibit you from.
Forward because, I mean, you've got minimal leader, minimal staffing and, and minimal leadership that's going to be there. So.
We've got a motion. Motion stands.
Motion. I second.
Say that motion again.
It's, I want to do the motion to set the Arado County Fairgrounds as a special revenue fund under Parks and Recs.
And authorize the county manager.
Was that your request or just to fill this position?
No, it's not to fill the position. The re, I really, I can't make the decision of creating an authority or having this as a, as a new division under Parks and Rec. I don't have the authority to say we need to create a, create an authority. That's a board decision. So once that decision is made, that we're not going to go the direction of an authority. We're going to go direction of adding this as a division under Parks and Rec. And when we start generating revenue, it will be set up as a special revenue fund. Then I can move forward with filling the position.
I think that's the, I think that's the path we're wanting to do now. And you could always.
Yes, please.
Do the authority later.
I just suggest that you do that motion at the 7 o'clock and.
Okay, we'll do it at 7 o'clock.
We'd be glad to.
Sounds good.
Just wait till 7 and let her ask. Okay.
Just leave it as is then, the motion.
Do we need to add this to the agenda under new business?
Do it at new business.
Well, are you, are you going to be discussing it again under the county manager's report?
Either way.
If you have more questions.
It's going to be an actionable item. Does it need to come out of her report or under new business, her request?
Either way, if you're going to be discussing it during the county manager's report, just make an actionable item out of that. If not, then you can add it.
That's fine.
Technically, it's not really new business in the traditional sense. Pretty much covered the discussion if we just want to.
And then just make the motion at the 7 o'clock.
You're too.
That's fine. I'm good with that.
That's all.
All right. We're good for now? All right. We're going to take a brief recess, or just a very brief recess.